Okay, Kiel.
Present.
Monahan.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
And we have Mayor Manning, Jones, and Brennaman absent with notice.
He's got a degree on everything.
All right, before we get started. We're gonna move this meeting here along. So. Everybody should have read the packet, everybody should have had their questions answered by now, so. And obviously, if we're not all in agreement, it's gonna fail, so at some point, dwell on that, and we'll move on. All right, so I am looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
I'm asking for a motion.
Oh.
You hit the first, I'll take the second.
Okay. I make a motion to start the agenda.
Prove it.
Prove the agenda.
I approve.
Motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
For the second, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm so excited to say second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Approve minutes of previous meetings. I make a motion to approve minutes of both previous meetings.
Second.
This is very discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? You don't have any bills, do you care?
No.
Okay. Public comment, is there anybody from public area?
In regard to the whole town Christmas yesterday, thanks to city council for supporting that whole group. The people did a wonderful job this year. I drove the plow and stuff up towards the end of it. And those people from Main Street all the way up to this, I'm sure, about a thousand people standing.
Really?
So thanks for supporting that group, and that group that put that all together this year did a wonderful job. The weather conditions they had, it was a good job.
Thanks, Karen. Anybody else? All right. Ordinance is seven five, we're a little early. Let's come down to the first reading ordinance, six sixty-three supplemental appropriations ordinance. Teresa, you want, can you touch on this in less than two minutes?
Yeah, I can. So, every year, we kind of look at the budget, and if the, we're running short on some budget money on a, in a particular fund or a particular line item, or if the council has added things through the years that weren't in the original budget when it was passed, you know, the previous August, then we have to do a supplemental budget, because you can't go over, you know, your budget funds. So basically, that's what this ordinance does. So if we have any larger shortfalls in the general fund, or things have been added to the general fund that weren't originally in the budget, or if things were added to the other funds, or shortfalls in the water, or the sewer, this supplemental appropriation adds it. I put in your packet an explanation of each line item, the amount we're adding, and why we're adding it. Is there any questions?
Do you want this as a separate line item, or as written?
It's just approving ordinance six sixty-three.
Six sixty-three.
Yep. And we'll be two readings.
Order six 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 three to adjust funds to general fund. From general fund to the line item.
Basically, you're just approving the 2018 supplemental appropriation.
What you said, thank you.
Second.
Very discussion. Call the vote, Chris. Yes, yes, Jim.
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Uh, second reading ordinance six six zero, then a break. Ordinance, nothing's changed on that, so.
No, I think it's first reading.
You good with that, Mr. Jay Rayman?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Go ahead. You can. Yeah, you can.
Council has directed me in the past that when I'm sitting here, not to make motions.
Has council said that, really?
He's acting as the mayor.
I don't think so.
His position as mayor, and the mayor in our own doesn't make motions.
I appreciate that, okay? I think we've broken that rule once or twice, maybe.
Mine must have been absent.
I recall entirely, I make motion to approve second reading of ordinance six six zero.
All second up. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, now let's go back down to seven five, public hearing, propose zoning amendments. I would appreciate it if these were dealt at one at a time, because I don't have intentions ongoing for one of them. So we can either pass three tonight, or we can fail the whole lot, so.
He's probably doing one at a time, like you said, because if there's issues with one of them, he can go back to P and Z board to readdress versus all of it.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number six fifty-five.
Second.
Let me get to it, six fifty-five, that is the definitions ordinance, so.
This would be changing three definitions in this only regulations?
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Ordinance six fifty-six, in my opinion, should be tabled, or it will fail tonight, so. Make motion to table ordinance number six fifty-six.
Your turn.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ordinance six fifty-seven, change of use permits, I actually really like this one.
This would be adding a whole new section that would clarify the change of use process, because we never really had that before.
This would have been handy a year ago. Two years ago.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve ordinance number six fifty-seven.
Second.
Very discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving along. Make motion to approve ordinance number six sixty-two.
Definition.
Driveway, dark parking places and driveway aisles. Did you read it?
Yes, I did, but I need a refresher course.
So basically, it changes two things with our off-street parking. It addresses the driveway width. Right now, we allow driveways to be thirty-six feet wide, unless they're expecting semi-traffic, then they can be forty. But it says it can be that wide at the property line. Well, it doesn't really clearly define, you know, the boulevard area can, you know, how wide can be in the boulevard area? That wide, or, you know, essentially, if you take this literally, it could be the whole boulevard area, which, we don't want the whole boulevard area concrete. We need some grassy surface there for snow removal, and for water drainage and whatnot. So, we just want to clarify, you know, whatever the width is at the driveway, that can come down in the boulevard area, that plus, they can have a six-foot apron. And it also puts in there, they must pour any new ones, a sidewalk in there for future. And then the other thing it clarifies is in commercial industrial zone properties, it wasn't really clear of what exactly they had to have hard pavement to. It just said, you know, the permanent parking need to be paved in the driveways. But it didn't say, where do you have to have driveways to, or do you have to have a driveway? This basically states, if there's a building on the premise that has a vehicle or pedestrian access, you have to have a driveway aisle to it, and that has to be hard surface. It can't be like crushed asphalt or anything. And then there's just some definitions to go along with those changes. But those are the two things that changes.
See, though, Teresa said it, because so much more straight folk.
And I missed that. There's a sentence in there that is a little bit disturbing to me, as a property owner who doesn't have a port sidewalk. There's no provisions, if I repour my driveway, according to this, I have to include a sidewalk, even though my neighborhood doesn't have sidewalks.
Yeah, according to this, any new ones, if you repoured it, you would have that one. But you gotta think, someday, maybe your neighborhood will have it, someday, they might be mandated, and when that day comes, do you want to repour your entire driveway again, or do you just want that section? Or if you got a crack in the apron of your driveway, you just only have to repour that versus the whole entire length of your driveway. So, it kind of helps the future of the homeowner. And really, there's no big change in the cost of it, I mean, it doesn't hurt the homeowner at all.
Aesthetically, it's not pleasing to the eye.
Yeah. That's what I.
Well, as happy as we're getting, some of the people, you know, we'd ask them to put the sidewalk in, and they wouldn't do it.
Yeah.
So then, down the road, if it ever become mandatory, they're not gonna be ADA, and it's gonna be tough to go back and get it corrected. So this way, they can give them right the first time, even if there's not a sidewalk in there, at least it's taking care of the future.
So I was looking for the future of when, if sidewalks do go in.
Sure.
Yeah.
Can you get a variance to opt out of it? You know, like in Travis's case, if that were the case, could he apply for a variance to, to how to put it in?
I mean, you can always go to the board to apply for a variance if you can't conform, or don't want to conform to any of these regulations. You always have the option of going to the board.
Um, it's hard to prove the hardship, though.
Oh, I don't agree.
Yeah, because it's.
Because it's not pleasing to the eye. The, um. Is there a motion for?
We had a motion, but no second.
Yeah.
Let's call the vote, yeah. Take a minute, yeah. Wouldn't need to rewrite it, it's fine. I mean, if they need to put exceptions in there for certain neighborhoods. I see your point. That, I, you know, like, my property, I put a sidewalk in the east side of my property, and I don't have to put a sidewalk on the south, because, just because of property law. So, just because of the way that that neighborhood is planted. That's why, that's why some places have sidewalks, and some don't, in the, in the older parts of town. You know, just because nobody had the foresight to have a sixty-six-foot right lane. Then you come in and put a brand-new street in, where there used to be this strip of asphalt, well, then the, you know, there's not fifteen foot. I don't think there's five. So. Uh, I guess the point I was dwelling on, that was if your moment over was our, you know, concrete placement permit now, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Effectively.
Yep, anything for platework, yep.
Does, does this impact any changes that would need to be made to that? Any additional wording, or clarifications, or?
No, because basically, with our, I don't believe so, if I remember now correctly, I mean, you just check off what you're gonna be doing, whether it's a driveway, or a patio, or, you know, what you're gonna be doing with the concrete, and then it states below that you just must follow the city ordinance and regulations. We don't call out that, you know, you have to have a sidewalk in your driveway. I mean, we don't specifically state what those ordinance is, it's just that you have to follow current city regulations.
You know, the more I think about what Travis mentioned, just because of the properties that. If there's no, if there's no escape clause. Because when I think about mine, if I want to redo my driveway, coming off the street, there's, what are they, four-foot wide, Mitch?
Yeah.
That's gonna be four foot, that's gonna be four foot flat.
Flat.
And my driveway is gonna be at a, what do you suppose that grade would be, Mitch?
Probably usually probably.
Usually probably fifteen right now. I mean, you'd be pushing yours to.
Twenty or better?
I mean, that's what I was thinking, the biggest issue you're gonna run into is steep driveways, that not going to create this flat area.
One thing to keep in mind is, right now, if somebody bring an order, or bring a petition to put sidewalks throughout town, there's more sidewalks in town than there's not, it would definitely pass. And basically, we're trying to, if all these new driveways are getting poured in some of the old parts of town, if they put the sidewalk in now, or have to put it in now, it's gonna change a lot of hardship down the road. I mean, if, once they pour their driveway, because a lot of them can still make it, some of them, you can't, and with ADA, I mean, there's exceptions to the rules where you do the best you can with it, but.
So what do you do in my case, Craig?
That's gonna be one of those things that you'd probably have to put it next to the curb, and try to work with it that way, and you'd have to live with the steep area.
But even if I, even if I put it next to the curb, if I repoured my apron, and I put it next to the curb, my driveway, my driveway is twenty-five foot from curb to garage, or no, it's probably actually thirty. So then, I'm gonna have twenty-five feet to make that grade, when I lose the four feet for siding.
Basically, what we're trying to do is, anything that you need to put in, or being, if you.
Well, I know what you're trying to do, but this, this ordinance doesn't have, this ordinance doesn't take into account the portions of town that are currently messed up.
And if ADA comes through town, they're gonna figure, they're gonna figure something out. I mean, that's, basically, we're trying to, trying to make this.
Ever thought to think that in the case of a right away, if the right away is not there, that probably wouldn't go as hard, and a variance could be justified, or something like that. You think that would, Larry?
I'm, I'm thinking about, the biggest fear that Canton has, the biggest fears that Canton is that the ADA department comes in and doesn't audit, and makes us do a bunch of stuff, because everything is out of compliance. We continue every time we do a project to make it ADA compliant, and I think that's what Craig is trying to say. I understand the issue that you're trying to address, and, I'm not, is there an ADA safety bill?
As far as ADA, there's not really a safety bill, or at least, I'm just saying, as far as your ordinance goes, you can grant a variance to your ordinance here, and I would think if the right away is not available, that, to me, would pose as a hardship to, to that situation. But, if ADA does come around, like they have in Sioux Falls, and Sioux Falls got dinged last couple of years, and they're gonna do a full assessment of their community.
Yep.
Really, so.
They're doing that, so.
Yeah.
Define dinged.
Mitchell's been in trouble for it, too.
The, I don't know if there's been.
If you remember, we had an ADA complaint last year.
I don't know if there's been.
And there was a big issue with the feds.
I don't know if there's been fines associated to Sioux Falls, but they basically put him on a compliance program. They've gotta bring all their intersections and these things into compliance, because they've done some projects that, that weren't quite done right, probably, so. Wow. Just back to our two examples again, he's got curbing gutter, I do not. Who would determine where my sidewalk would go, or my neighbors, or anybody else on RT for that matter? There's a stand, your standard is that it's a foot off the sidewalk.
And then we'll also change in the field.
Off the property line.
Put off the property line, yeah.
A foot off the property line.
Most boulevards are fifty and a half feet, so it'd be that foot off the property line, back to five foot, now since we have five-foot sidewalks, and then the rest is boulevard. But there's areas, there's a lot of times in the field, we'll make changes on it, because there's something in the way, whether it's an established tree that's been here for a while, we'll have a shift a little bit. We try to keep as close to standards as we can, but there is changes.
Or a rural ditch, like, or a rural ditch, like your street. Right. To me, your, your block that RT is, you have to rebuild that street, really. You have to rebuild that street.
Right.
That's why I just think of my neighbor who put a sidewalk in two years ago, now if he told me in, or driveway, if he told me I had to put provisions for a sidewalk in there, it literally would look completely out of place, and probably stay out of place for thirty years. Or until that street got the curbing gutter, or ADA came through and forced the issue or something.
I've got a feeling before ADA, it'll be up to the Lord of people, and we'll get changed that way, for sidewalk construction. Because like I said, they've got the votes written off, and it comes up.
Call the vote.
A little bit of a gray area.
Do we have a second? I say, do we have a second?
Do we have a second?
No.
Do we have a second?
Second for. Are you coming to the vote?
Yes.
A lot of discussion, a lot of second.
I'm slipping, Larry. All right, so we have a motion. Who made the motion?
Travis.
Who's saying it? Let's fire it back, and just make sure.
To approve ordinance six, first reading of six sixty-two.
Okay. For the vote. Travis?
No.
Jessica?
No.
Scott?
No.
And I'm a no. Just for.
One question, would you like the planning zoning board to readdress this?
I, I think, I, I think you should, I think you ought to bring up the comments that were made tonight, and I, I understand the ADA side of it, but I also think we need a, I think we need a relief valve.
Some kind of, like, variance.
For people that are in a situation that I'm in, with not enough right away. You know. I'm sure, uh, I'm sure if somebody thought about long enough, they could probably think of another example or two, or. If I lived on Kelly, I would probably put a sidewalk in.
Well.
Chances of that should be being rebuilt.
Pretty good, yes.
You know, probably watch, that, that reality is probably a lot closer.
I'd also root on my trees up front.
You know, and that'd be another thing that, with that street, will be probably rebuilt in the near future, not near future, but five, ten years, for drainage, and stuff like that. So you wouldn't want to put sidewalks in, in some of those areas right now, just for, I mean, it'd be one of those things you want to.
And it'd end up, who knows where it'd end up?
Because if the street gets cut, something like that.
I don't want to talk about sidewalks anymore, because we're moving on.
That's, that's what.
Uh, second reading ordinance six sixty-one, alcohol, February ordinance.
There's been no changes to this since first reading either.
Make motion to approve, second reading of ordinance six sixty-one.
Second.
Very discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Contingency fund transfer resolution two thousand nineteen dash eight, this is just the written version of, uh.
Well, this is similar to the supplemental appropriation, but basically, we have built into our budget fifty thousand dollars in contingency money, which means, in the general fund, anyway, this is just for the general fund. So if we're running short in, in small items, or whether we're running a little short, you know, in pairs of maintenance, or sellers, or whatnot, we can use, transfer that money out of that account, and put it into these other accounts that are listed. And I attached, once again, an explanation of where we're at, like I'm transferred to, and why. Do you have any questions?
Anybody like to entertain a motion for that resolution? Will we approve resolution twenty eighteen dash eight?
Second.
Very discussion. Call the vote, Scott?
Yes.
Yes, Jessica?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Reports. Karen?
All right, we had ninety, had ninety-six calls for service last month, fourteen traffic stops. Other than that. Accidents when it got slippery, I see we had three signs knocked down, or run into, one of them was reported. I don't think the other two were ever reported, so those were taken down. Other than that, as far as that first ice storm, it wasn't too bad out, we didn't have too many accidents, so, in the county, so it wasn't as bad as we thought it was gonna be. One thing I wanted to bring up was package thefts, seems to be the, the theme this Christmas, as of last Christmas, this time of year. If you have a package delivered to your house, and you put it on your doorstep, I would expect it not to be there. If you live in there, it ain't like the time. Mailboxes are hit, usually hard this time of year, so, again, most of it is, is people are targeting this time of year because of the packages that come in. They targeted graduations, for mailboxes, taking on cards, thinking it's cash, gift cards, stuff like that, that don't necessarily, you know, you don't necessarily need to, to ghost, but I would say that that's gonna be a big thing again this year. For, I mean, it always happens sparingly, but this time of year, it seems to pick up with the packages, especially on doorsteps. Fraud reports have gone up, I've taken quite a few fraud reports this month. Anything from credit card to, um, American Inn, there's Mary Beth, I don't know if you all have met her, awesome manager out there. What she's been doing is, she's been finding people that have, um, what they'll do is, they'll get a credit card number, they'll steal that number, purchase like the latest iPhone, whatever it is, make reservations at the American Inn under a name from somebody from South Dakota. Ship the iPhone that was purchased with the stolen credit card, or the stolen number, to Hartford Hotel. Then the next morning, cancel the reservation, and say, hey, we're not gonna be there, and then email another FedEx forwarding address, email it to where, the latest one was Alabama, the one before was New Jersey. So, she's been giving these packages, and she accidentally opened up the first one, thinking that it was a package, because they don't get packages for guests hardly at all. So she opened it up, goes, this is a brand-new iPhone, I didn't order this, nobody ordered this, then she figured it out. So that seems to be a fraud, and then I'll report that to the state of South Dakota. What they're doing, so hotel managers or any staff have to just be aware of packages coming in, and then send an email to the American Inn to forward that, like that, so. I guess there's all kinds of ways to make money if you're pretty good, get away with it. I talked to Amique Rodriguez on the phone, we had a good conversation. I advised him that I was not gonna forward the iPhone X to him.
Any offer, Misha?
He did not, he did not, I, I know, I, I told him I was gonna set the phone, the end of the conversation, so. Hopefully, they quit doing it there, but like I said, she's been on top of it, and she's been, and there's really no way to find these guys, or prosecute, or, or, you know, or locate them. Did you hear that most of this stuff now is being run by the mafia? So, among all the other things, I guess they got these big shops, and that's kind of what their thing is now, is fraud, and making money that way. And then, you can't use the iPhones, because they're programmed, and they're, you can't use them in the United States, but you can ship them to China. And they can, they have no restrictions on them, and they can reprogram them. I could follow.
So when Alfred's been in China, can he come back from the table?
Probably. Yeah, probably. Get on eBay, see if there are deals on iPhone X, maybe, but. I'm not sure I'd do that part of it, but.
Sounds like a lot of work to save a buck or two.
I think the iPhone X is now, what, twelve hundred bucks?
Thousand.
About twelve hundred bucks.
Ah, those are uptown problems.
Um, yeah, and it seems like, I don't know if anybody read the report, but Minnella County, just in the area, they see seventeen pounds of methamphetamine, so, that was for the month of October. That's, um, hard, September, October, you know, for like a thirty-day period. Which is more than they seized all the flash.
Just ruining Christmas left and right. Home, drugs.
Yeah.
Boom, boom, that's all I got for you. Anything else to report?
Yeah.
We are doing here. Seventeen pounds, how many, I, I have no idea what that is, that quantity doubled out in, how many, how many personal servings is that?
A quarter. A quarter gram is a use.
Quarter gram?
Yeah, so it's twenty-eight grams in an ounce.
Sixteen ounces in a pound.
Sixteen ounces in a pound, and seventeen of those, so if you did all the math on that, you're looking at.
Seven thousand six hundred and sixteen doses.
Uses, seven hundred and sixteen uses.
Servings.
Servings, servings.
And then you're looking at.
Hard from fifty to seventy-five bucks per quarter gram. So you can times that by, I mean, and that's what they do, you know, how much you're buying a pound for is not necessarily, but the, the number they use, whenever they're trying to say the amount of drugs that they've seized, it's always in the use, you know, the quarter gram.
And it circles right back to stealing packages.
Oh, absolutely.
We're right back at the starting point.
Absolutely. I guarantee if I catch, yeah, I'll guarantee it. If I catch the guys that are doing packages, it's either gonna be Jude Miles messing around, or someone that's hooked on that. Trying to find a quick easy buck. Quick, easy payday. And they're up all night, so, might as well.
All right, I know this is probably a federal gig, but getting beat up a little bit on the, we tried talking about the Christmas party, didn't have a chance.
Yeah, it's, I can't release too much information, other than what's been in the paper.
Okay.
Um, you know, obviously, I was there.
Yeah.
But, uh, it'll just play out in court system.
Okay.
It, uh, yeah. I'm not a very good secret keeper, so I'll just keep it all.
Fair enough, Christmas party, what?
Oh, it was over the, the search warrant that happened out at the junkyard. This is quite a big time.
I think it's Christmas party, right? I think it's Christmas party reference.
I think we've talked about.
You were talked about though.
That's what I heard.
Yeah. Alright, anything else?
No, if anybody have any questions for me or comments or, oh, uh, we have been hitting Mickelson. Um, we, I've been working twelve hour shift, kind of covered shift in the mornings and then in the afternoon, you know, obviously my regular shift to work in Hartford. But that's allowed me to spend some time on Mickelson in the mornings so that they can see about are there in the mornings. So we made a couple stops.
Isn't this people in fifty-five on their?
What's that?
Fifty-five on sixty.
You come to their fifty-five and I'll educate you.
Alright.
Thanks, Tyrell.
You bet. Mitch, is there anything in your report you want to touch on or is it not in your report?
Just got two action items.
The pay requests or anything, or the pay request you want to touch on?
Yep, just the first one is what, um, Danmark?
Dunick.
For Dunick, so that's for the Danmark Avenue sewer extension project. So it just gets them paid up to Dave for the work that Dave uses and done so far.
Motion to approve, uh, application number two for, how do you pronounce that word again? Den, do you, do you make?
Dunick.
Dunick.
Yeah.
Incorporated for amount of five, fifty-nine thousand, twenty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents.
During discussion. Call load Jessica. Travis?
Yes.
Yes. Motion to approve application number seven for, um, Silco Construction, the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty-four cents.
Second that. It's very discussion.
Sorry to say it's Silco, background from it's Silco, not Sukka.
It is Silco.
It is Silco.
Well, I, every time I hear Sukka.
Yeah, everybody says, I still try to have to retrain myself.
Okay, well, good. Well, then I'm right and they're wrong.
Alright, is there any discussion about the payment? No, we're not talking about that. Very discussion about the payment? Scott?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Jessica? Anything else Mitch? Alright, thanks for, anybody got anything to mention? Alright, moving on. Craig, any in your report you want to touch on that's not in your report?
Just a couple things on my report. Um, Skid steer, I just want to know, do you want me to go for bids on this or how do you want me to? So we don't think it was like worth payload. I can put together specs, we can go for bids with it. Um, I've already got a price for, or just a quote from another dealer, um, on it. And he was about, you know, we've always ran Gale, that's pretty much what we've been running. Um, the government discounts are huge with them. Um, I did get a price through John Deere, just to have the same identical size or anything like that. It was over six thousand dollars more through John Deere. Um, this is something we can't just buy, it's under the bid limit, but if you want me to put together specs and we can go off bid, you know, just get it going this week if possible. I just wanted to know what kind of your feelings and how you want me to.
If they're not under the bid limit, I'm fine with your recommendation, just by where, by where it is.
So I can get some quotes on it. Like I said, and even the John Deere dealer said, he goes, with Gale's government discounts, he said, we, none of us can even come close to touching them. Not to have been wrong, we've been happy with them, so.
Is that the consensus or we make them ready for road in Madison?
Yeah, well, actually, yeah, we'll, yeah, the one we, we usually go through, uh, put off and sale there, mile put off, let's hope we can buy.
But the, the machines are.
Made in Madison, yeah. Mustang and something like that.
Anybody have any problem with that or can we tell Craig that's a consensus?
I would encourage you to go get the best deal in the game.
I will, I'll get some numbers together and be back for the next meeting with them. What's the motto? We are discharging, our, everything looks like it's gonna come into compliance this time around, so we are dumping water.
We are or we?
We are.
We are dumping water, okay.
Yep, starting on Monday.
Okay, anybody got anything, Craig?
I suppose, how he, uh, auction goes on the old payload.
Yep, um, I did talk to a representative through Stephis about if it doesn't make the minimum, um, basically they'll put no sale on it. And I said, so what speed's gonna be in that? He said, basically, he said, we'll just probably charge you for them to advertise, maybe a couple hundred bucks for trying to be sold. So he said, we're not gonna take advantage of the city, so. Although, Friday it goes up for auction, it'll go until Wednesday, so. And we did some touch up painting on it, cleaned it up good, and literally if you park the old one outside, it's hard to tell the difference between the one. So it's pretty good. I have to, I have to second.
So why didn't we clean it up?
No, you say that.
Why didn't we clean it up like a year ago?
Well, we were trying to get a new one.
He's not familiar with the answer.
I was just letting them know what the answer was. Alright, anybody got anything, Craig? Alright, thanks Craig.
Yep.
Karen, anything in your report you want to touch on or not in your report?
Um, well, I did include the, um, meetings for next year and have my report, but it was a catch, so.
Alright.
What are you having my date plan right there or what?
Anybody have anything for Karen? Alright, next year I appreciate it if you want to let the corporations get so far ahead.
Good luck.
Stop the council from making decisions.
Alright, Teresa, anything in your report you want to touch on or not in your report you want to touch on?
Um, nope, just kind of gave you some updates on where we're sitting on a few things. Do you have any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Teresa?
What do you think, uh, where, I mean, the roundabout versus the diamond design? I mean, what's your, your general, I mean, I was there and, and, uh, and I've kind of did a little survey, I don't want to get the cart way ahead of the horse here, but I mean, uh, yeah.
Well, you probably got the feeling at the meeting, the DOT is kind of in favor of roundabouts.
Yeah, definitely.
So they kind of are pushing them. And, and I was skeptical of roundabouts, but after talking with them and seeing some of their videos and seeing some of the statistics, I mean, they are proven safer, we wouldn't have no stopping, no need for a stoplight in the future. I mean, kind of sound like the way to go, but I think probably public opinion will drive that of whether we have them or not. I mean, the one thing me and Craig have definitely said, the biggest thing that we want is a city, is make sure you keep that traffic lanes open.
Well, that's right.
Because there's only two months' construction time difference and you certainly don't want to shut it down for six months and, you know, have all, you know, inconvenience to the citizens and the businesses there or whatnot, so, you know, we're really pushing, you know, keep it open.
It causes cause heart attacks.
And they do. It could be very dangerous.
I think you'll see more roundabouts in the future.
Yeah, they're, they're just going that way.
Yeah.
And, you know, ultimately they're paying for it, so.
Larry?
Larry?
Hang on, hang on, before you get started Larry, we're about at the maximum time limit for talking about a project that's six years away. Go ahead and give a comment and we're moving on. Okay, go ahead.
I'll just pass.
No, I want to hear, I want to hear.
Think you should all go look at the roundabout that's been built at Watertown. It services, uh, three major agricultural roads coming in and it, and it does the ethanol plant on the south side of Watertown. And it's all tough traffic, traffic and it's just like, must sit there and watch it.
That's one that they referenced during the meeting at the Watertown.
But they're proposing a smaller roundabout here.
Well, I'm just telling you that the roundabout concept is pretty slick.
But that's the fire reason why.
I was afraid of him till I went and saw it and, and learned the first rule, once you're on a roundabout, you got to ride along.
There you go.
Okay, that's time on the roundabout project.
Thank you.
Alright, old business. I would, I would suggest we table this. Signing of deed.
That would make sense, since we're meeting as one of the signing it. So I make a motion to table, um, the deed transfer of the South Street lots to H A D F. There's no, is there, no, I'm sorry, I'll wait for some second here, we get it. Seeing no second, I'll ask you a question then.
Alright, hang on Mel. The motion dies for like a second.
There you go.
So we are, yeah.
Jesse, where, where, um, is there any kind of deadline on this that, the H A D E F's, almost said H E D C, perspective on?
We would move forward this immediately. If I got distracted by an interview here, that would be wonderful. I have, uh, two investor, investors I'm working with, one with a bank, one with a commercial organization, looking at the numbers right now. And then they'll get back to me with the questions that they have.
Okay. Sorry.
I have a question, Jesse?
Yes.
About this project. So the quote unquote proposed, uh, request or proposal was for a day.
Correct.
How many lots does the, the physical structure that was proposed sit on?
Is including the, the site itself or just the structure?
Just the structure.
Uh, I think just the structure, probably a site and a half, probably a lot and a half.
Lot and a half.
Now the site itself, including playground and parking, probably close to three lots, maybe four.
So here's my, here's my question. The way you've explained to me how it works is the city hands off the land to Hartford Development Foundation. Right?
Yeah, okay.
And then the proposed daycare either builds a structure themselves or an investment group is put together to build said structure. And then, I'm just.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And then, and then the daycare would lease said structure from the investment group, quote unquote, investment group.
Right.
But in my mind, well, I guess I'm curious as to if the situation would be that all six of those lots would be transferred to the investment group? Or just the lots that the structure sits on?
You know, it's hard to make, give you a concrete answer right now because the investor groups haven't been formed yet or have passed.
Hypothetically.
Land, it would depend on what they want to do. So the daycare in question might have a fourteen thousand square foot facility in the next five years. Now they can only afford a eight thousand square foot facility based on a certain rent number that we're using, that's what the market price in the Sioux Falls area. So I think if my investment group is going to promise them an expansion of the space in the next five years or build, or build out a space or build a space of fourteen thousand square feet, going eight thousand square foot daycare in it, then I could say they're taking all six lots.
But see, but here, I'm, I'm thinking, I'm thinking about the future again. Because let's say this all gets put together in two years down the road, the daycare says, this isn't working for me, we're pulling it out of the lease.
Right.
And then you have an investment group that owns and built.
Right.
And they reconnoiter it or restructure it to do something else.
Right.
And then in my mind, there's four lots sitting there with nothing on them other than a chain link fence and playground toys.
Right.
And then they say, hey, we got these two lots and they have a structure on them, but real quick, we have four bare lots and we'll do whatever we want with them.
Right.
And literally those were, dare I say, given to them. Because those lots are gonna get sold to the investment group?
And the fun thing with investment groups is that they're, they're created to make money.
I realize that.
And so let's say worst case scenario, the daycare signs a ten year lease, Hartford takes a plummet next year and it stops growing. You know, I mean, the age jumps from thirty point four to sixty point.
So it, so it was never, so it was never intended to give the lots to the investment group?
We haven't made this decision yet because we don't have the land. That being said.
You've obviously talked about.
That being said, in my mind, this is me speaking for myself, um, if the daycare provider had chosen to restructure themselves, I would have strongly advocated for partnering with them, either with a reduced cost of land or some sort of investment on behalf of the foundation. However, they don't want to do that and we have worked that angle every single way and that is not in their, their financial plans.
So the only way to maintain control of those lots and how they're used would be for the city. We've got to build a municipally owned building.
Right, they, they have direct control.
They have control.
Right.
This is no different than the transfer of the lots on Main Street, or any potential transfer of lots of, of, you know, the land under the Sports Conference or any other transfer of any other land we've ever done.
Correct. Now, in my mind, again, I consider the foundation as a whole to be able to put in any of these issues specifically. This is an opportunity for us also to work with an investment group to bring in more business in the future, but not necessarily on these six lots. But it's just getting word out there to the Sioux Falls investors or regional investors that Hartford has a market, where there's demand for leases, which might be made here. And thinking of what basically we've gotten the last six to nine lots, what's, what's coming out of that, just to get some more. And with growth comes families, families, these days, our families in Hartford, both parents generally work, both spouses work. Both spouses work, but they have young kids, they need to have a place for the kids to go.
You know, being able to bring that up, I thought about that too because in a conversation we had. If, you know, you kind of pitched it like, if you built the daycare, the daycare, that would draw the families.
Right.
But then I kept thinking, if you have the families, wouldn't that spur entrepreneurship?
Supply and demand.
Well, chicken on the egg.
Right, which one comes first?
Exactly.
The families move here if there's no daycare? Does daycare move here if there's lots of families? Well, the daycare does want to expand, so that tells us that it's, there's a, there's a demand for services, it wants to supply that service. So in this case, in the absolute, the families have, have become, they have created a demand for more daycare. And that's why the foundation has to try to answer that demand, rather than waiting until it's a crisis, we're trying to be proactive.
It almost, I don't want to say it's a crisis, but it's pretty close because just at our daycare center, there's like sixty kids on the waitlist. And I know people who live in town who have to bring their kids to daycare in Sioux Falls.
That's a problem for community too.
There's nothing.
Right.
So, so, and I don't want to talk about this all night, cause really this is literally just about deed transfer, but if there's such a shortage, see, this is what I don't get, if there's such a shortage of the demand.
Right.
Why, why isn't it, why, why isn't it just happening? I mean, why, why aren't people opening daycares if there's that, if there's that much product waiting?
Sure, sure. We can go into a number of different scenarios here. First, there is daycare that wants to open. We had three that applied for this RFP, we went out there to try to find people to do this, we found three, we chose one, one wants to do it. One wants to open a daycare of eight thousand two hundred and fifty square feet that can care for a hundred and thirty kids at one point. So there is a demand and just wanted, somebody is responding to that. So that's, that's happened. Uh, second point, daycares are very regulated industry and profit margins aren't great for daycare providers. Uh, nor for investors. It's a high risk enterprise, um, many daycares are for profit organizations. Um, very few large daycares that I've found in the Sioux Falls market are for profit. Uh, I, I can be wrong, that's just from my, my understanding on the subject. Um, and so it becomes a risky maneuver. For example, with this, with this building, the tenant is going to promise at least a minimum of a ten year lease to try to make up for some of that receivance that comes with investing a one point two million dollar project with one ten. Thirdly, and this is, this may not be a topic on the daycare industry, but daycare providers are primary educators. They're educators first, visiting people second. And so their primary focus is educating young children. And so this is, and again, not on, on daycare providers, but there's not always that reaction to the market forces based on their specialty. And it's tough, I mean, if you look at daycare in general, it might seem expensive, but you're employing people at a very low cost to care, care for children, eight hour a day.
Well, I, I have first hand with this, I'll tell you what, it, it, I am, I'm completely amazed. Oh, maybe I shouldn't say this. I, I, I'm amazed, I'm amazed at the comments people make about what their daycare costs. And that's literally paying somebody to take care of what should be most precious to you, while you're spending money on stuff that isn't that important. It, it's, it's baffled my mind for quite a while, so.
And we live in a, you know, a consumer society, so our job as a community is to make sure our needs are being matched. They choose to do more business here. This is a great example of a library, where folks are going to Sioux Falls, go to the library. When you're in Sioux Falls, I want to go get a burger. We're in Sioux Falls, I want to go get a burger, I'm going to go shopping, I'm going to do this and this and this. Daycare, well, I need to go between buying this place, pop up my kid or pick the kid up while my wing is stopped by such and such store to do business. If we bring more services into Hartford, we'll bring more business to town, more sales tax dollars, more families, more property tax dollars, we'll create a stronger economy.
Alright, what's your comment? If that thing goes sideways on the daycare, it turns into a board eat kennel? Double your revenue, maybe triple it.
Yeah, 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 no, that's, that's.
And people. Park for a dog park.
And, and people, and people won't complain about how much they got charged for their dog.
Absolutely, right, right. And with that, even if this thing would go sideways, which I don't see happening based on our, our growth projections, which are steep, we're still, we're still acquire property tax off of it.
Alright, well, I'm going to wrap up the, uh, conversation. So, the topic at hand is deed transfer.
It's been, it's been, so there's been table, um, alright, so table.
The table failed.
The table failed, okay. Um, the one thing I, I'm, I'm comfortable with unless Jesse Euro came with it is that the warranty of deed produced by Free Bird Nelson and Ask, uh, says Hartford Development Corporation and not foundation. Should that be corrected?
It doesn't matter. We are, we are registered as the, as the H A D C.
Okay.
Under the federal guidelines, we're also an H A D C under the state.
Okay.
We're doing business as the Hartford Area Development Foundation.
Understood, okay.
Now I'm concerned, what are they?
Well, um, they're, they're, H A D C D B A, H A D F.
So, so they're the Hartford Area Development Corporation is what they're registered as and they just last month changed their doing business as name to the.
Alright, we're going to wrap up the conversation. There's going to be a motion to approve a vote before a moment on.
I make a motion to approve the deed transfer South Street lots to the H A D F.
Second.
Is there any more comments? Want to call a vote? Scott?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Can I be yes? Review, approve petition of secret north of Danmark. Jessica, you want to address the counter?
I mean, you don't have to, I didn't know if people, I'd be, if I could do a backflip, I'd do a backflip. Well, I pulled the petition probably the end of August. And it kind of started to be like a part-time job, which was fine because you got to find people home. The people that signed the petition had very good dialogue with them and they were all, wasn't any resistance or, I mean, they were all for it. I mean, ninety-five percent of them signed it within five minutes of hearing from them. And Travis went with me on a couple of them. You know, I did not contact the gas company. I did not contact the house, Madison Homes, which is the first one north of subway, just because A, I figured he'd probably know because it's a rental, B, it's about sixty miles north of town. The golf course wasn't out, so that probably means the subway strip mall would be a no because it's owned by same interest. Um, Mark Driscoll just never, I think he would have signed, he just didn't get in front of them. I mean, I never had his signature. Sue told me straight up she wasn't going to sign. Also, if you don't get both property. Yeah, no, who's ever going to be in traffic? Otherwise, everyone else signed. Um, I got fifty-nine percent, fifty-nine percent.
Mr. Halgo, well done. Wow. I, I noticed that was the last one to sign too.
Yeah. So I called him, I went down there, I don't know, whenever. I don't remember the date. Talked to him. He was fairly cold, which I anticipated that. He wanted to know what his costs were going to be, so I left it on. Had Teresa send him or they had correspondence on what his cost was going to be when, if it does get done. And then he was, I think, waiting for his check from the right away. So then I called him a Tuesday before Thanksgiving. Actually, I went down there. He was not in yet, left my name and number. He called me back about four hours later and said, yes, I'd be interested in signing. So I went down a week ago today, had his signature. He happened to be in. I said, I'll be there in twenty minutes. I blew the T, he signed it. Totally different guy than the first time I was there. And that was the last one. I know I needed them in the golf course.
Right.
And the golf course was, they want to leave it a rural setting.
Well, so you're going to, the Lennox, um, Halgo's doing Lennox?
He's in T in the mornings, Lennox in the afternoons. I just had to travel to T.
Just because they first off thank you for your due diligence. I mean, because we said on this council many times, we all know how hard and difficult that can be. So I know it took a lot of work, good job.
No, everyone, like I said, uh, those houses from O'Toole's South, very, had very good conversation with every one of them. And I mean, the one night I went out, I got, I collected all those and I probably spent two and a half hours because it was just good. And I told him I'd keep him informed and that they were fine with that. And they were excited, actually, many of them.
Okay, so.
I make a motion to approve and accept the street petition as presented.
Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Just one thing. So now, does that get the ball rolling with Stockholm or already this Teresa?
Well, you already got him doing the design, so once they get the design petition, we get a cost estimate. Then we can, if you guys want to do the project, you know, have to get in the cost estimate and whatnot, we'll do a resolution of necessity. And then I'll start the ball rolling and the assessments and the project, yep.
Alright. Uh, review and approve the two thousand eighteen audit contract. Do you want to touch on that real quick for, uh, for Jessica's research?
Yeah, so basically, um, Quam, Burglin and Post has, has been our auditor and this is the fourth year of, they'll be doing our audit. We've been working with, um, uh, we had a switch over, we had a gentleman before then that had done several, several years. He passed away and then they took over. The first couple of years, it was kind of getting familiar with how we do stuff in the books, but the last two years, audits have gone really good. We do an audit every year. We're only required to have them every two years, but we like to do them every year just because, you know, if we're not doing something right, I want to know what it is right away and just kind of keeps us. I think it shows our, the citizens that we're doing our due diligence. So, you know, there's a lot of wording here, but basically the verbiage is the same as previous contract. Basically says that, you know, they'll complete the audit to the state standards. They'll come in, they'll send it all to, to the state for the Department of Legislative Audit and, um, basically the only thing that has changed is just the dollar amount. It, it go up three hundred dollars. It was seventy-seven hundred dollars last year, it'll be eight thousand this year. So, which every year it takes up a little bit just to cover costs.
Two separate motions for this middle two or can we do it all as one? I mean, you, you, you know, your secondary note asked, uh, Coleman.
No, and we usually have them, yeah, my note was then, we usually have them, we have, you know, an audit every year, which they audit the books, and then we have to have annual reports filed. We have them do both of them just because them doing annual pro, our, our books makes them more familiar with our audit. They will have another, a separate contract later on for that. So this is just to do the audit for last year.
Do the audit, alright, got it. Motion to approve, uh, Quam, Burglin and Post to do the, uh, city audit for two thousand eighteen.
Is there any more discussion?
Need a second first.
Second. Second.
I didn't hear that.
Any more discussion? Alright, all in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed?
Put your feet.
Alright. Mayhaw County Sheriff, Deputy Counteract. You want to touch on that quick, Teresa, or just?
Yeah, if you want me to. So basically.
Well, I think you spell it out, you spell it out in your report.
You know how much the time, we increased our hours. We're going to sixty hours of random patrol to a hundred. They'll pretty much get us twenty-four seven. You know, there's a few hours of shift changes in there, but this will get us close to getting full-time coverage of the city day and night.
That starts January first?
Yep, and this will start January first.
We're on track for that. Sir?
Sir, uh, we got three guys in training right now.
Oh, Lord.
Going to appear.
You get a team up here and then we're going to get some, we're going to get some seasoned vets.
Oh, yeah.
The new guys go up here and then we're going to get seasoned vets, right?
So in the delves, uh, we've had a couple detective positions open up, so they'll get transferred from patrol to there, so we're going to get pretty young in the next couple of years.
Really? I hope the price is going to reflect that. I know your, I know your price won't reflect that, but I hope the three, the three, uh.
We'll be able to do a better road project, uh, whenever I leave for, uh, the difference in bank.
Hey, well, when you leave, we'll pay off some, uh, we'll pay off some debt early. Alright.
Are these hours posted anywhere other than in our notes? I mean, it's like public information or?
I don't believe, I mean, the sheriff's department posts them, but that is what Walsh came up with.
As far as the seven forty-five.
The, the, I mean, it's got every shift like kind of laid out here. I'm thinking.
No, you know, that's just kind of what, you know, when Sergeant Walsh came and he proposed these hours of, no, they're not publicly posted, yeah.
Yeah.
As long as you guys don't go and tell them.
Right. I can adjust my hours and be fluid and when I want to work. So if I want to do a morning shift, I just come in at the morning shift and then if I want to stay late, I stay late. As long as I'm within that twelve-hour period, I talk to the captain and just because it's tough, I know when, when the weather gets a little bit better, Mickelson's going to have more activity in the evening hours than it is going to be, you know, at ten, ten to twelve during the day. So I talked about maybe modifying my hours just to get more coverage and disability. He was okay with that.
The high school kids know where the shift changes are.
Fine.
They figure that out pretty quick.
And they're all. Real surprised when we do kind of move things around.
Keep on their toes.
And I have noticed that the shift during the day, whenever I leave, they're going ten-six, which basically, basically, they're in Hartford when I leave. So that was, that's always good to hear.
Alright, well, I will greatly appreciate a motion to approve that contract because twenty-four seven coverage has been a long time. Make a motion to approve the twenty nineteen Minihaw County Sheriff contract.
Second.
Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, moving on to correspondence real quick. Am I supposed to open this, Teresa, or?
Oh, yeah.
Not dressed for me, so, well, I guess.
It is, it's you and the, the mayor and the council, so I didn't know.
From Hartford area, Chairman of Towers. Dear Council President Monahan.
I personalize.
Mayor, Mayor and City Councilors, this year haunted Halloween party was held at the West Center Global Mentee School. The additional space allowed, more inflatables, games and fun. Our heartfelt thanks to all of you for your support of this community event. The two thousand eighteen event provided a meal, games, prizes and inflatables and tons of fun. Thanks again. Couldn't do it without you. Hartford Haunted Halloween Committee. Can I leave? Does anybody have anything else?
Yes, uh, I will compose a letter, i.e. thank you card for hometown Christmas for signing it next meeting.
I, uh, participate in the Halloween dealing, after. Pretty fun. Lot of kids.
My goodness.
Lot of kids. Honestly, I would never see them in the gym and at my door. I don't know why, there was that many kids.
Alright, good enough.
How long was the thing?
You know, from five to seven.
Yeah, too long. Long time.
Yeah.
Alright.
So wear a costume next year, it'd be great.
Yeah, see, one child's life, I swear, they were going, their, their eyes were big as saucers, they were kicking a head hard.
Well, that's got ready to thank you. Alright.
Oh, that one in there.
Four door phones. Uh, we do have executive session tonight under.
I like both legal and personnel.
Legal and personnel, so I would entertain a motion for that. We will begin the move now.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Gonna take a motion to which are.
So moved.